We're good to go, okay. We call this meeting to order. This is the April work session for the Wyndham School Board. We'll start it out with roll call. Angie Krossen.
Yes.
Barb Jones.
Present.
Joel Bordewick. Bruce Muse.
Yes.
Dustin Stevens. Joseph Lecan.
Dustin Stevens is here. He just didn't come off the mic. I can see him. He didn't unmute. And same thing with Joel. And same with Joel Lecan. So I'm gonna, one, give me one second here. I'm gonna try to unmute him, make sure they can get on.
Okay.
Joel, will you speak now, Joseph?
Yep.
Okay, Joseph's on, and Dustin, can you speak?
Testing. Dustin's present.
Okay, Dustin. And myself, present. So we are missing Joel Bordewick.
Joel Bordewick has just joined. Can you, can we hear you, Joel?
Yep, Joel's here.
Okay. Then we have a full board present. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance then. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you can see that over my shoulder, right?
Yep.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Anything to add to the agenda?
Nothing. We do have a change of document.
Quick reminder before we start here, all the votes will be roll call since we're meeting virtually on the Zoom system. So everything will be roll call votes. Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Don't move.
Barb Jones, second.
Okay, motion by Joel and second by Barb. Any questions on that? Now we'll proceed to vote all in. Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes. Item number four is approve the project application and the project certificates for payment and the abatement payments for the Highland project. On your narrative, you saw the two figures there for Highland, six hundred five dollars, twenty eight cents. And for the elementary building, fourteen thousand, forty nine dollars, ninety nine cents. Combine those two for payment, and we have fourteen thousand, six hundred fifty five dollars and twenty seven cents. Entertain a motion to pay that.
Motion to pay by Dustin. Joel seconds.
Okay, motion by Dustin, second by Joel, to pay those bills for the building projects, amount of fourteen thousand, six fifty five and twenty seven cents. Any questions? Now proceed to vote on that. Roll call again. Start with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion carries. Item number five. Approval of project change orders. There were six change orders listed on your narrative. Couple of those were negative amounts, which means we were overpaid. And then the total amount, if those were added together, is seven thousand, one hundred seventy five dollars and seventy five cents. A motion to move that forward.
Bruce, move a, move to approve.
And Joseph seconded.
Motion by Bruce, seconded by Joseph, to pay the change orders. The amount of seven thousand, one hundred seventy five dollars and seventy five cents. Any questions on any of those? Majority of those, I believe, are with the playground program. There's no questions, and we'll proceed to vote on that. Motion to accept the change orders of seven thousand, one hundred seventy five dollars and seventy five cents. Starting with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Item number six. Accept the resignation received from Stephanie Kelly, the business computer teacher effective at the end of this school year. Motion to accept that resignation.
Angie, move approval.
Barb Jones, second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by, excuse me, Angie seconded by Barb to accept the resignation of Stephanie Kelly. Proceed to vote. Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Item number seven is a one-year leave of absence request from Stephanie Redmond for the 2021 school year. Motion to accept that leave.
Barb Jones will move this forward.
Dustin Stevens, second.
Great. Motion by Barb, seconded by Dustin, to accept the one-year leave of absence request from Stephanie Redmond. Any questions on that? Now we'll proceed to vote on that motion. Start with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Item number eight is approve the hiring of, excuse me, the hiring of Timothy Haingate as a 1.0 full-time equivalent chemistry, physics, science teacher for 2021. And his table's enclosed.
Dustin moves for approval.
Joe, Joseph seconded.
Okay, motion by Dustin, seconded by Joseph, to move that forward. Any questions on his resume or the position? If not, we'll proceed to vote on that. Start with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion carries also. Item number nine, approve the hiring of Sydney Holland as a 1.0 full-time equivalent social studies teacher for the 2021 year. Motion to move that forward.
Angie Krossen, move approval.
Bruce, second.
Motion by Angie, seconded by Bruce, to approve the hiring of Angie, or Sydney Holland, for social studies teacher for 2021. Any questions on this one? Now we'll proceed to vote. Start with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries also. Item number 10. Approve the hiring of Stephanie Redmond as financial administrative assistant effective May 2020.
Barb Jones, move this motion forward.
Joseph seconded.
Okay, motion by Barb, seconded by Joseph, to approve the hiring of Stephanie Redmond as financial administrative assistant effective May 2020. Any questions on that? If not, we'll proceed to vote on that motion. Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's approved also. Item number 11. Approve the hiring of Heather Van Dyke as a Mars HR and financial assistant effective March 20, or May 2020.
Angie, move approval.
Bruce, second.
Okay, motion by Angie, seconded by Bruce, approve the hiring of Heather Van Dyke as Mars HR financial assistant effective May 2020. Any questions on this hiring? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes. Item number 12 is the memorandum of understanding with Palmer Bus Service regarding the COVID-19 payments and fuel. Motion to approve that MOU.
So moved by Dustin.
Barb Jones, second.
Okay, motion by Dustin, seconded by Barb to accept the MOU with Palmer Bus Service. Any questions on that, or any explanation, Mr. Wormstead?
Due to the COVID closing of the schools and Minnesota High School League closing activity sessions, they've agreed to not charge us for the estimated cost, which would have been billed at a later date for this compared to last year, and fuel costs, it's gonna be between forty and fifty thousand dollars approximately in savings, but we'll have other anticipated costs coming forward due to this also. So it's nice to see the MOU done.
Any questions on that? Now we'll proceed to vote. Start with Angie.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Item number 13. It's the approval of the Braun Intertech proposal for special testing inspection services for the career tech education remodeling project. And that document was enclosed in your packet, and the total estimated cost of that is about nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion to accept that proposal.
Angie Krossen, move approval.
Joel, second.
Thank you. Motion by Angie, seconded by Joel to approve the proposal for testing and inspection services by Braun Intertech, the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
They are also doing the elementary school, put through the quotation bid process, so low cost, also doing their elementary.
Any questions on that? If not, we'll proceed to vote on that motion. Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Item number 14. Review policy 612.1, which is development of parent and family engagement policies for Title I programs. The policy is on the screen now, and it is also in your packet, so. Questions on that?
This is a minor change. To approve this, you have the K going from a K3 to a K5, and going from Winfair label to Wyndham Area Elementary. No other statutory guideline changes.
Any questions on that policy? This is the first read of that, so that will come up next meeting for approval. Item number 15, update on the residential home construction project buildings and grounds. Now, which of you people want to talk about that, or if you all want to talk about the meeting you had?
I have the notes up from the meeting for them to talk about at the board, the committee members.
Go ahead.
Joel.
Yeah, Dustin, you wanna take the lead? Um, sure. Fill in, Joel. Help me out, Angie. It was brought up again to maybe expand with the CTE and local contractors for some building projects. Some places that were considered were some of the, what was to be the Prairie Meadows subdivision on the northwest or north areas of the school property, Seventeenth Street, Seventeenth Avenue area. And we did this, discuss over it, and we discussed the future growth of the school, and what the needs might be for that property out in that area, for access, for parking, for continued growth of the athletic fields that may need to be out in that area. So at this time, we can look at the numbers up here, and the committee certainly supports continued work and growth in the building trades program as it's allowed by our fiscal means. And again, that's something to take into consideration. We will want to partner with a local contractor on building projects, and in the future, we'll look to employ a CTE teacher who is also a licensed contractor or licensed in the building trades area for those purposes. And the committee does not want to build on the Prairie Meadows due to the future needs of the district, which we just shared about the future growth of the school needs on that property. The committee is willing to possibly look at building on Seventeenth Street. There's some lots there in the environmental center. Again, that would want to follow the parameters set forth that we already discussed with local and the local building, and also using students. May need to replat or look at replating the width of those lots from 200 feet down to maybe in the 130 to 135 feet for the frontage. And that would create some space to maintain the bridge and the path through the environmental center and still retain a lot of the park features that are there. The area that was in question that we may again look at in the future is a lot of what is used currently by a lot of trees. So some of the areas the school uses is to the west of what is in question. Joel, fill in please, if I've forgotten and left something out, or Angie? Yeah, good job.
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Joel.
Okay, maybe it might be a good idea to run a survey to the community about using the environmental center for building. Because the input I've gotten the last two years has not been good. People do not want that place to be cut up. It has a purpose for school, apparently only, not for real estate. So a survey, I think, would be really well done for as PA, the PR for our district, I would think, would be something that we would maybe look at.
We'll certainly keep that in mind. That's, that's something certainly good to think about. Joel?
Joseph? Joel or Joseph you're talking to?
Joel.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. We definitely want, whenever we make a decision as a board, we definitely want to make sure that every single time we're just representing what we believe the vast majority of our school district wants. And I think a survey is definitely one way of getting that information. So I think that's a great consideration, Joe, yeah. And, um, we're not developing these lots. We are allowing discussions to see what it would look like if there was interest in developing these lots. So I think it's maybe too early now to ask, because we don't have a whole lot of information. We said, yeah, okay, maybe we'll think about it. Let's see what it would look like. So I think that if we did decide to go to a, we could probably do a whole lot more data collection first, Joe. What do you think?
Sounds good. I think that we can never go wrong with including the community, because that will either make, as a school board and administration, more trustworthy as far as the community is concerned.
And Joel, just so you know, you know, the education piece was at the forefront of all of our minds during the discussion, and that's why we're gonna be looking at lot size and everything very closely to make sure that we don't interfere with anything educational that's going on in the environmental area.
Yeah, because I know when I was teaching, we used that for, before, when the log cabin was there. I use that as a teaching tool as far as learning, teaching students perspective, one-point perspective and two-point perspective. So, and of course, I've been there long enough in the district that the, and the summers used to be used for plays, and now also the science department had some input too as far as educating students, so. And those things are still stuck in people's minds as far as the value of that area.
Just a piece of history too, the two houses the district built are, were part of building, were actually just to the east at the first two houses on that Seventeenth block there that starts. The district was part of those houses. That's some of the areas they first started building, other CT when they had a licensed contractor who was a CTE teacher. It was close and reasonable right there. I think that's why it was all platted, because it's currently platted for how homes right now.
Just one though, isn't it? Just, we just added for more, one, one more. That's it.
Three more. It's platted for three more right now.
I, I was going, I was talking, Doc told me just one more.
No, he must have, we pulled up the actual plat maps. It's got three more, correct, Dustin?
That is correct. In fact, there's so much frontage as it's platted right now, Joe, that by making the lots more of a, a nice size for current homes, the three current platted lots would actually, when they're, if you look at the 3A, from 200 feet down to 130 or 35 feet, and again, that's just speculation, that would leave an additional 200 feet at the end. So what was to be used at the very end would not be used. And again, it's just in the discussion phase at this time.
Yeah, but remember now.
I'll pull up the plat map while you're talking.
Yeah, pardon me?
I'll pull up that plat map while we're talking.
But also remember this now, that after, if we, you know, if it does come to the fact that we do some billing there, just remember the syllabus will have to change when we run out of property. So, that's something that we have to look at too. Are we gonna, the long term, is it something that we can sustain over years?
And that's why we're looking at hiring somebody that's a contractor as a CTE developer, where possibly we could look at building houses on school property, and then having them pre-bought and then moved off the school property. That way, the longevity of the program is intact.
Okay, all right. That's good.
Give me just another second here, and I'll have that pulled up. Apologize. I'm looking for the one that Dustin, you showed me at the actual, the map. Did you send that via email?
Yes.
From your personal, though?
I bet I sent it to your phone as a text, I think.
Yeah, he copied us all in that, Wayne. It was via text.
Okay, I'll send it to myself real quick here, because I want everybody to see what Dustin is talking about and with the real picture on that.
Wayne, I just emailed it to you.
Okay. Everybody see that right now on the share?
Kinda.
Is that better?
Small.
We still see your email inbox.
Okay, it's not, I didn't show the picture, sorry. One second, I'm gonna stop sharing and go back to this then. Sorry. Let me reshare. There we go. Guys, correct, select the right thing. How's that?
Perfect.
All right.
So we're good.
All right, so now, if you look at the house that is, you can see my cursor, that's the lot that was built by the, the school right there. These are 200-foot lots right here.
Uh, 150, 150, 152.
150, I'm sorry, 150, 152.
Yep, the ones are 200.
Okay, these are 150s and these are 200. So realize that 600 square feet there, we're talking about, if we did anything, about 420. So we're right in this area. You can see my.
Now what direction are we going? With that, are we going west or east?
I'd be going west of these houses right here if we did anything.
Okay.
This is the old, what's that?
Joe, do you see the two lots to the west of the house?
Oh, yeah.
Right now, just in the talks, really, it would only, it would take those two and turn them into three. So a lot of the land in that, in the far left one on your screen would be left alone and unused.
And the bridge is down here.
Where is the walk bridge located then?
It's far enough out of the picture that it's, it's not visible.
Okay, that's farther to the west.
To the, Wayne could probably move his cursor over to where he would presume the walk bridge to be.
Walk bridge would be over in here, if you can see my white background.
Where is it? I can't see it.
Well, this blue here, to the left of that still.
Okay. Uh, just a, just an interesting note, all those trees are planted by the elementary many, many years ago when the environmental was. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of personal history that affects our community. So we have to be really careful and make sure we always bring in the community as far as big decisions like this.
That's a good idea. And, and we were mindful, again, I think we were just speculating in what we were discussing in response to the, the request for the use of land and, and.
And I understand that. That's good. That's good, because, um, yeah, it's okay, it's okay to research things, you know, and find out, you know, the pros and cons. But I don't think you could ever go wrong by not including the community, you know, as far as like surveys or, because there's a lot of personal attachment to that place over the years.
Yes.
That's the thing, and, and you don't, and the feedback I've gotten, this has been, we've talked about this the last two years, that it has not been, it has not been a positive thing with people. They want, they want the hands off that place because they believe it's, oh, it should be completely used for education, and that's it. And the thing is, we don't know the future as far as that with the new elementary out there, how that can be used too for educational purposes. And who knows, someone may come in and build an amphitheater. You know, so there's a lot of things that could happen.
I think one key is if we did do something there, it has to be school-based. We're I think one key is if we did do something there, it has to be school based. Where students were involved in the process like the other house. So it'd be definitely focused educational based that way. Otherwise, I don't think it'd go, we would not, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the feelings of the committee was there will not be a developer allowed.
So would that mean the house should stay or be moved off?
Well, if it's in that area, we'd be helping build them. And then long-term for the project, we would talk about trying to build homes, like some schools do, if we can get to that point. This is down the road, back behind the school that are actually can be physically moved to different locations.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe, I think something you said earlier, something that we mentioned when we were discussing this too, is if, uh, let's say everyone in the community agreed and, and we thought, let's, let's, uh, use that area to build houses and, um, that doesn't last for 30 years. It doesn't take 30 years to build a house. So there's a few grade levels that get the benefit of that. So there is definitely the consideration. I think you said the syllabus will change. Yep. I think primarily what we'd really want to do is have something that was really sustainable over a very long period of time and many, 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 many classes would be able to benefit from it and economically feasible.
And the thing is, we can't ever forget too, today, is a great, is a great movement on learning skills. So that has to be part of it as far as building, you know, these kids are learning skills. And hopefully that'll help them after they leave the high school, you know, graduate.
Right on.
That's entirely with our career pathway program and we're focused on that from our building trades, getting these kids out to different areas from, you know, prime port.
Yeah. And then, but, but the community needs to know that too, you know, that these are things that we are doing up to date. You know, that's, that's the big thing now is stress, is learning skills and, okay, and, and I, at the end of, um, the end of the board meeting, if we have something else to say, I, I would like to say something too about, um, another item, okay?
Okay, wait till we end then.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions on the building stuff? If not, then we'll move on to item 16, which is a COVID-19 update for employees required to report for work.
No, I'm unmuted. Sorry. Um, you're gonna see the packet information I laid out there about employees. Uh, other districts have done this, is where they looked at either an hourly increase or just a bonus pay system for this. I will note there is a mistake. Apparently, my fat fingers punched in the number 48, so 30, and it's actually 40 days. So number one should not be 240, it should actually be 200, the same as number two. For a bonus for those hourly employees who were, report to work, required to report work in the building. And that is something that's becoming more common for schools to do. We do currently, right now, allow less hours to receive their full pay because we have been ordered by the governor's executive order that people show up to work, they receive their pay because we're going to get our state aid on that. So after talking to the HR department with, um, Jana Ravity, she said the easier one for her implement would actually be number one. And at the $200 stay for 40, 40 days, or $200 for 40 days, it wouldn't be a difference on that. And she said it'd be easier to administrate number one. Again, this is the only for the hourly employees that actually are required to report to work in the building. This is informational for the May 14, no, the May board meeting for action.
Right.
So fire questions away for clarification. So I can get this modified if you would like to still do this.
Uh, how many employees will this affect?
Um, we're looking approximately up to 50 employees. Some have already had dates, they're sick, things like that that have taken place. So, you know, we won't expend the maximum amount on it either.
You said 50, correct?
Correct, 50, approximately.
Questions on that?
The reason we did not do a perfect attendance or anything like that on this is where we're looking at is, if someone is sick with something, it's not to report to work. We'd give them credit for the times they were and if they were to sit down, sit, stay home for a seven day period or because of a fever and/or have to have a 14 day quarantine, they would know, they'd at least get credit for what they were able to report.
And what is the intention of the bonus? Just kind of walk me through that if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, walk through the intention of the bonuses. We've have as many teachers and then staff out of the building as possible. And we do have some staff that due to other health conditions, ours currently working from home. And we're asking people to step out of their roles that they were actually hired for, for this, to then come in and also report, due to an executive order, to serve as an emergency daycare, food service and go through the process and hopefully not get exposed to anything.
So these folks are actually doing more than what they were doing beforehand. So they were asking to do more work.
Beyond the scope of what the original job description was because the governor gave us an executive order, yes.
Okay.
If he had just shut us down and we did not provide food service or daycare or anything else like that, and said just work from home and, and pay the people, then I wouldn't think that'd be appropriate to do that. That's why it's only for those who are required to come in. Some, some are not.
Any other questions on that?
We're also currently tracking this with a sign-in sheet. So we know exactly who's coming into the building each day.
And we can cross-reference that to their job assignments that we have them assigned to.
Okay. Sounds good.
Example, your salary employees are not eligible for this.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Can I ask one question? Are there any concerns with this that people need alleviated? Or is it okay to bring forward to the next board meeting? Because I don't want to put something on your agenda that is controversial enough, they don't want to do it. Or is there any clarifications at this time they'd like in order to feel more comfortable?
I think it's well deserved at this point.
I think it's well deserved, definitely. Um, my only concern, and it's definitely not controversial, but I think you did a good job of explaining why. My, my concern is the people that working, that are working from home, that's extraordinarily difficult as well. Um, they've been, had to make a lot of concessions and a lot of things as well. So I just wanted to delineate um, why we felt the people that had to report work, um, were, were more deserving of a bonus and, uh, understanding now the extra load they're having to pick up. It, it helps, it makes more sense for me now.
Good comment, Joe.
Other comments?
Do you hear me, Joe?
We heard you.
I did. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on. Number 17, review the budget to actual percentages as of April 1st. That's all I close in your packet. And so Mrs. Pepper is gonna talk this one.
Correct.
I think this is the third time you've seen it this year. Um, what we do is we compare what we've actually brought in and revenues and expenses that compared to our budget. Um, this is required by our rating system when we do bonds by S and P. And it just shows how we're doing. And what you do is you compare it to the prior years. And now we have five prior years to compare to. I'm realizing that there are different starting and ending dates each prior year. So like this year, we started two weeks earlier. So that could play a slight effect in some of these, but all you're doing is looking for spikes. And realistically, when you look at everything for Fund 1, 2, and 4, you're right in the normal range of where you need to be. Um, I don't see anything, you know, spiky or low. Then when you go down to Fund 7, the debt service, you know, that's a little skewed because of the distribution of the bonding that we've been doing with the building projects and also the LTFM bond. So that's a little skewed, but once again, you can explain it. And so that's okay. And one thing I did add for this time period is, um, the student activity account, which is Fund 21. That is now under board control. So technically you probably should see this, but obviously we have no data to compare it to. So, um, so that will show up as the years go on. Is there any questions regarding this information?
Pretty, pretty clear, Peggy. Thank you.
And we don't expect any change in, um, income because of COVID.
The state has guaranteed our revenue based on our average daily memberships. And they're actually going back to make sure we can use our accounts from February in case we see sharp declines or increases in our accounts. So they have a baseline to use for a lot of stuff. And they have actually worked on numbers that help, uh, impact us in two years based off this year's numbers because there's some of the data is two years old. In order to hold that steady, so we can expect minimums in two years in certain categories. Not a lot of them, but there's some that does happen with that.
The only funding or things I could see maybe happening is with the community ed and possibly student activity with no students in the building. It's really hard to use any of those activity account funds because it's usually there to support the students in what they do. And community ed would probably be another one that might, you might see something because of the COVID issue. Um, because we're not offering community ed classes, you know, um, Adventure Club isn't running, it's emergency daycare. So a few things like that, ECFE really isn't running. Um, I know our ECFE teacher reached out to see if someone wanted to do some distance learning. Um, and parents said, no, we just need to lay low a little bit. So that'd be the only things funding wise I could see that might change. And that's relatively small.
Any more questions on there? We're gonna go ahead on the capital outlay budget.
Um, included in your packet is just the recent years of both a capital outlay budget and also the preliminary budget. Um, I did email out this afternoon, the entire spreadsheet to all the board members showing all prior years. Because sometimes it is easier to, um, you know, compare to something a prior year. So, um, so hopefully you maybe had a chance to look at it or can look at it. Um, so what we're doing is we're, we're currently obviously in fiscal year 2020. Um, in the column, right there where the Wayne is pointing the cursor. And so this is three different types of funding. Our operating capital, our LTFM money, and then our LTFM bond money. And remember that LTF bond money is money that we bonded for the Highland project. And at the same time, we did the abatement bond for the parking lots with the new building and the CTE remodel. Um, so, you know, we have to sort of keep these funds separate, hence the color coding, for lack of a better word. But in there is just the, some of the stuff is the normal things that we do year after year after year. Usually we use, you know, our operating capital is, you know, our Honeywell principal and interest payment. And we have some of our copier printer leases and our tech salary. And then we go down below where we talk about some other things, you know, what we can use for operating capital. Operating capital is usually things or supplies that have a long-term value. It's not those disposable things that you might purchase. So it's anything that has a long-term value to it. And on the column there, and AJ is where we're, there's a column there, it's where we spent as of April 17th. So you can sort of see, um, what we've already expended out for this current year. And then down below in the lower ones in the gray area is, this is all our LTFM money. And once again, this is that LTFM revenue that we come, that was recently new. And it's also that bomb paint, bond payment, which is on line 54. So remember, we are paying for that bond for to do these LTFM projects out of our LTFM revenue. So we need to make sure we include that in there. So. And then we also remember in operating capital, we have funds set aside for when we sold our buses. And we sort of put some money aside in what we call the bus reserve account. And we decided we were going to use this for one-time projects. We weren't going to use it to support anything year after year, but just one-time projects. So right now, this year, um, we purchased a new Bobcat. Um, we were doing the EBI upgrade. And I know Wayne is still working with, um, in purchasing a pickup for our Costola department. So that's the recap of this fiscal year. And so if you go below, down towards the bottom, it's sort of, this is what I estimate what I think we're going to carry over into next year. Once again, it, it can vary a lot based on when bills get paid, especially on that Highland remodel project. You know, if they start earlier, you know, we pay bills earlier, but, um, this, these figures here down there then go up the next column for the next fiscal year. And once again, you'll see exactly some of the same kinds of projects for the next year. You know, things really don't change too much with this. Estimate the different things going from year to year to year. One thing we will know for sure that at the end of next fiscal year, all of our LTFM bond, um, money will be spent on the Highland remodel project. And that's okay because the law states that we should, when we bonded for that, we needed to use it hopefully within two to three years. So this is right where we need to be. And we know with the window replacement, the, the HVAC upgrade in the restrooms, and there's probably going to be some flooring issues up there too. Um, you know, that's where that money is coming from. And then, once again, we always try to look out to the next year. So then you're going to go to fiscal 2022. Um, one thing about this is we're getting close to the end of our Honeywell project payment. Um, our last payment will actually be in July 2022. So that's one thing to keep on our schedule and our, in our thoughts. And once again, um, we try to make good fiscal decisions when we come to operating capital and how we use it. And remember, LTFM money can only be for like-for-like projects. So we can't use it, we, if we're going to replace a window, we can do it for that, but we can't build a new window if there's not a window already there. So. Lots of information. Um, once again, this is our best guess. We don't have a lot of major projects out there. You have to realize with the new building project, with the Highland remodel, um, you know, we don't have anything real major after we finish these projects. Are there any questions?
Peggy, I have two questions. May I ask?
Of course.
Okay. Uh, the first one is, how is our capital fund balance? And with that, um, is there a possibility that we would have to use that in the next year or two to meet our expenses due to the lack of funding that could happen due to the COVID issue?
We cannot use operating capital funds to pay for anything unless it's within the, the description of what the state allows. So you cannot use operating capital funds to pay for any salaries for anybody. It's very clear. We have very good guidance from the state of what operating capital can be used. And if you go up, go up to the top lane, um, in column, um, right there, um, AG and AF, that is the actual fund balance in each of the accounts. It would be AF, 5, 6, and 7.
Oh, thank you.
That is the actual fund balance as a 7/1/2019. And as you go over to the right, those are just estimated because obviously we don't have our audit done and approved and T's crossed, I's dotted, that kind of thing.
And just Dustin, to give you an idea, Peggy, we have, this is, we've spent about $1.3 million of the $2 million over here. So you see the $2 million estimated? We spent about 1.3. And we'll spend more still between the projects going on. So we're still under budget. That's the budget for that. Um, so once that happens, we get audited numbers, these numbers down at the bottom will change. But, you know, example, if we get that pickup still like we're trying to do in this fiscal year, that's going to be $15,000 that I already have accounted in here just in case. If we don't, that carries over to next year to try to get that after July 1. So there's a lot of items there. So Peggy does a great job of tracking this for coding. So it's very easy for us to look at that. So right now, we're at about anticipated spend minimum of 1.337 million of the $2 million on that. Correct, Peggy?
As of now.
That's gonna change. That's going to change, but just to tell you where we're at. April 17.
Thank you.
So we're, we're in a good spot. So when we look at our balance, we, we actually hope not to use this $92,000 as our goal from the general fund as okay, if we don't have to, because we always have to, with our capital projects, we still have to prop things up. And Peggy did a good job of explaining how we use the reserve. If you come down here to LTFM carryover, that's like replace a roof fund. So as you're going to see right now, way she has it structured, we are actually continuing to build that. So we do have a large ticket item that comes up. He does a very good job with this spreadsheet to make sure we can stay on track. If you really want to get some history in there, we have a few other years back there to 2014, if you really want to dive through what we've done. As listed as audited. All the way through. If you want some free time.
Other questions for Peggy? Or Wayne or anybody?
All pretty clear.
All right Peggy, another big one.
Okay, now we're going to move on to our preliminary budget for fiscal year 2021, which is the 2020-21 school year. Um, I'll start off saying this is probably the hardest one I've ever done in the last 10 years. I start working on this in January. You know, because there's always information continually changing and coming out. And then, you know, as we start figuring out what we do for staffing and things like that. Um, and then March hit and lots of things have been really slow coming in from the state. Because obviously we're all under, doing lots of other things that we didn't think we were going to be doing. So you have to take this with a grain of salt, that this is a preliminary budget. It's my best guess and that's all it is. There's some things that are set in stone and some are going to vary. You know, I'm still waiting on the state for some things to give me information on, on budget forecasting that aren't, isn't available yet. So um, once that becomes available, it might make things a little bit different, but until I have it. So Wayne, if you want to share that spreadsheet, I'm going to go with some things that are known and then we'll move on from there. Looks like he's pulling it up, so.
This the one you want Peggy or do you want the one that shows previous year's?
This is perfect. So if you want to go down, all the way down to line 53 approximately in column AA. I'm so used to running the mouse and talking, so I appreciate Wayne doing this. So this is just a little recap of what the above columns carry that are in the light green. It's based on 1,121 ADMs, or that's students. And this is, you know, this is pre K through 12. We're estimating approximately 85 kindergarteners on this. So that's some good information if you have. This year, I think our, our kindergarten is closer to 90. So you know, adding five to eight students does make a difference. The next information regarding that operating capital balance that we just went over. So that's all that same information is just in this format. The next thing is information about the ads that we've already, you, the board have already approved. So we've added two special positions for the Windomere Elementary, a .6 art teacher. We added an AD position and we also have some ag industrial tech teaching positions and a computer teaching position part-time open. This also includes adding a 1 point FTE business office position as well as a 1.0 custodial position for the new Windomere Elementary School. Um, one thing this does not include is another bus route. Wayne and I have been meeting with Palmer and we're working on different scenarios regarding some slight adjustments due to the moving of Winfair to the new elementary school. So that will be another discussion coming up. So right now, we're not anticipating adding another bus route at this time. So, um, one thing this does include is also that we are, we continually cross fund the Bridges preschool program. It can vary from year to year. I'm anticipating it to be about $40,000. Once again, that could change based on students. And this budget does include a percent increase in the formula allowance from the prior year. So, um, so that actual dollar amount is $6,567. So just a few things to sort of recap what everything encompasses. So we're going to then go up to the top and I'm going to really start with the easy ones right down there at the bottom Wayne. We're going to start at bottom line 48 approximately. So once again, the student activity accounts is under board control. So they are now listed down there. It's a Fund 21 on line 48. So this is money that is earned by the students to be spent by the students. We never let them spend more than what they have in their account. So you know, it's pretty steady and calm, things like that. So um, no big change there. Then we're going to move up to Fund 6 is our building construction fund. In a perfect world, all of this will be zero by the end of next fiscal year. You know, things could happen, but you know, this is the new elementary CTE remodel, um, the LTF bonds and then the abatement bonds. So once again, we anticipate to spend all that money in the fiscal year 2021 school year. And then that account would go away. Depth service is Fund 7. Um, once again, that's money we get in for our building projects. And as you can tell, when you go back to, to the purple area, that has increased and that's because of the new building and all the LTFM bond and abatement bonds. So our actual revenues and expenses used to be right on 1.5 million and now we're looking at anywhere about 2.3 million. But it's your ending balance that you want to look at anyway. So that's right where it needs to be. Our next fund is Fund 4. This is our community ed balance. So as you can tell, um, it encompasses our regular community ed classes, our ECFC, our school readiness, our Bridges program, our ABE program, and then our restricted, which is our preschool screening and our imagination library. Not a lot of changes on there. Depending what happens with the COVID-19, the community ed numbers may be a little high depending on when we could start offering our community ed courses. Normally the summers are really busy month, month because we're doing different activities for the students. You know, there's camps, things like that. We don't know what this will bring this year. So there could be some changes in that. Um, and then the next thing we're going to talk about after we get done this is there is a fund transfer out there due to COVID-19 that may affect our ECFE funds. So these are the numbers we're looking at. So nothing too exciting or wild within this fund. So that's it. We're going to move up to food service. Once again, we did plan on, I'm using a hundred thousand dollars this school year to help with the new elementary school. So that is taken into account. That's why there's that big drop from the actual balance of 201,000 down to 88. Once again, a hundred thousand of that is because of the new elementary. We're using a hundred thousand to go over to, um, to purchase the equipment for the So once again, when you take a look at that, we've put it in there, um, not a lot of changes in our food service. And then we'll go up to our general fund. And I don't know why some of those values didn't come out. But um, once again, just to break through crap on what this means. Everything listed under reserve are things that we are restricted can only use for certain purposes. So you know, that's paymentable taxes, medical assistance, LTFM achievement. You know, there's only specific purposes. So all these things, we have to make sure are coded correctly. A lot of these, we use everything in there. So there's not a lot of change in here. Is that operating capital budget we just talked about? That is there on line 22. Um, we have safe schools funding. This is a year that we got some additional funding in safe schools. It was approximately, Wayne helped me out, maybe about 37,000.
You're right. That's what it is.
Yep.
So that's still in there. Um, we're going to leave it in there until we decide there's a need for it and what that need will be. So that's still in there. So that's a little bit higher than normal, but once again, there's a reason for that. Our staff development dollars are in there. Another new one is called basic skills extended time. It's a percentage of our basic skills money. And this is money that we use for any after-school learning that we do. So Mrs. Frank does a strong eagles program after school, usually at one or two times a week. We also do a summer school, um, late July, early August. That's where that comes from, um, our extended learning at our middle school. So um, that's just a newer one there. So. Um, and then up above is where we go into our assigned and unassigned. And assigned or things are, is funding that we've maybe gotten, that's like our greater, great, great, greater Twin Cities United Way funds. Like we received a grant and we can only be specific for certain uses. So that's where all that, those kind of money comes in there. They sit in assigned accounts. We know exactly what comes in and what comes out. So um, the big one there is this year was that GTCUW. That's why it's a little bit lower than normal. Once again, we know why and that's what we're going to be using for some more CTE equipment. And the unassigned is the one that we can spend it on whatever we want. So that's where the majority of all of our salaries come out of. And instructional supplies and things like that, any of our extracurricular programming comes out of that. So, and remember, we did revise this school year's budget back in February. And then the light green is what I anticipated to be for next year. And it's very, very conservative and I threw anything in there that I could think of. So looks a little scary, but you know, Wayne and I have reviewed it quite a few times and we know it's going to end better than what it is, but this is the worst year that I could come up. Wayne?
I'm going to share this again because I don't know why it opened up wrong and did not have the correct numbers for the balance. So it looked a little wrong. For those NA columns. So there's the correct columns in there this time. Can you see that?
That's the right one. That's the one I'm looking at.
Yep. The, the other one, for some reason, the cells didn't copy over. So if you look at our past history, um, some preliminary budgets prior to this, this is not uncommon for us to have a look like this and have it close the gap considerably. Moving forward. Because we paint, we paint a picture of we're going to spend all of money for sure. And then also that we're very, very conservative on our revenue source. We have a worst-case scenario picture painted.
And do you want to pull up that one sheet I sent you that showed the revised versus preliminary for the last couple of years Wayne?
Is that in the packet?
Nope.
Yep, that's what I thought.
We talked about it last week, I know.
I got it right here. I just got to get to the right page again.
Sorry.
Nope, not a big deal.
There's just lots of numbers, so. Was there any questions on anything while Wayne pulls this up? I, I mean, we've shown this chart several times, so nothing really changes. Any questions before we proceed to the next one?
Questions or comments?
Here we go.
I just want to thank you guys for all the time you put in on all this budget stuff.
Once again, I always say a budget is a guide.
Peggy, this is the one that's, uh, shows corrupted, so I'm going to figure out and close up. One second. That's why I didn't download it.
Get me to re-mail it to you?
Well, that, have you done that before? It's not opening right. I thought a different way. Something, we're getting feedback on something.
There we go.
So Peggy put together a, um, picture of how we do our budgeting to show where we start to where we finish using the 2019 fiscal year final numbers.
So column E is our actual balance once our audited, our audit is all done and, and final. So this is how we ended up. The next columns, G, H, and I is when we revise the budget in November of every year when you, when you accept the off. So you can say, you can see that when we revised it just for the unassigned, we were at 2.3 million. We actually ended the year at 2.5 million. And then we're going to go all the way over to K, L, and M. And this is the preliminary budget that once again, you would have approved in the spring of 2018. And that shows that your unassigned balance was 2.1 million. So you can see sort of how it goes up from the preliminary to the revised and sometimes to the actual. And that hap, and it can fluctuate up and down for all those different types of accounts and you can see that they're all listed there. But once again, when you look at all the Fund 1, we actually ended up at 4.8 million. Our preliminary way back was only at 3.4 and our revised was at three, almost right under 3.8. So there can be lots of things that happen that adjust this.
And when you look at this, you can look at the actual balances from our audited numbers, 16, 17, 18, and 19 fiscal years and see our consistency across all funds.
And I will email this out to all the board members so you can take a look at it. And if you have any questions, please contact me. And I did this for fiscal year 2018 too. Wayne, if you want to go to the next worksheet. Exact same scenario of what it is, is column D there is our actual audited balance. When you go over to columns J, K, and L, um, we anticipated in my preliminary to be at 2.5 in column L and unassigned. When I revised it, um, it fell to 2.3, but then, but then it actually ended at 2.5. So you can see how sometimes different factors play in and.
My budget, just to show you, we had, we anticipated 1,091 average daily membership year, revised timer at 1,081. And so we downgraded our, some of our revenue forecast. And we had some increased expenditures we were thinking we were going to have that did not take place.
Because remember that we, we really tried to figure out what fiscal year things fall in, but sometimes during the summer months, it's really hard to gauge when that invoice comes in. And sometime it may be one fiscal year get pushed back. So. Once again, I'll, I'll email this out so you can have a better look at it. And then obviously ask questions. I'll bring it up again and probably include it in the board packet for next month. But once again, this is just your first look at it. There may be some, a few changes. If I get more information from the state in the next week, I may readjust a few things in the preliminary budget. We may do more different revising of the budgets next year based on what's going on. So I wish I could tell you that this is the way it was and it's going to be real close. I just, this is just a hard year forecast out, so. Is there any questions?
Nice job.
Okay, thanks very much Peggy. Any questions for Peggy?
Now that I'm bored, everybody can wake up.
You can read through it tonight and then you'll have questions tomorrow.
Read through it tonight. You'll get a good night's sleep. I guarantee you, okay? That's one thing I guarantee you.
May I fall asleep reading it, huh?
You will.
Thanks Peggy. Okay, item number nine. Okay, item number 19. I think we're ready to move on there. The governor's order to close schools.
Yep. So the governor, of course, last Thursday made it official. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, mine's cutting out when I talk. So. All right. So what we know is that the governor's closed schools for their were to continue for sure with our childcare for emergency workers through the end of the school year. We're still to provide meals through the end of the school year. I was, this afternoon, I received a copy of the school board member and the governor's conversation. Spoke to them from Friday. I got that about 3:30. And he was actually up there whether or not he's going to require for the emergency daycare or if we're going to switch back to adventure club. So I'm waiting for more information on that. And he hinted at maintaining the same meal service program, which I don't know if that's very feasible for us to do versus what we usually do in the summer, which is just one meal site for people. But so we're waiting for guidance on the meals and the daycare for that. Other items, Mr. Joyce has been working hard trying to find plans for prom and also graduation. We have received a little bit of information from assistant commissioner that says maybe we should postpone our prom longer than we planned on right now, May 9th, as sort of a drive-through prom. Also with that, the governor wants to make sure that the location takes place, but he was not committed on that conversation. Correct me, Don. I believe you were on that, that he would have that happen. And we're looking for more guidance as soon as possible when that would happen. He wants it to happen, but he was not convinced on when graduation could occur. So everybody puts in doubt our May 9th prom date, which we'll get, either Tuesday or Thursday. For half the schools to be there that I've seen, which are Big South schools, laying the prom or canceling it and focusing on the graduation. So I'm not sure which way we go with that at this time, but I just want to tell you where that's at. They've done a lot of good work to figure that out. Mr. Joyce and the committee for the prom. I'd like to honor that, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we're clarifying the guidelines and making it safe also. So we'll have more information on that later. I just want to make sure where that would maybe make a decision in the next few days on whether to have that or not or just postpone it to a later date. Other items coming forward, Peggy's going to talk about fund transfer a little bit in the account. Or we're probably going to want to do that. I do know of this, that if the governor pushes for our daycare center to be open for emergency workers and we are not able to charge, we are looking at quite a bit of money going out from the district with only revenue coming in to run that. And if we can, are required to continue to run daycare or food service as is with the number of people that we have, that will not be feasible either financially long-term. We'll eat through a lot of funds on that. So either way, whatever the governor decides, they have to tweak how we're doing delivery of meals from maybe a daily service between two days with the meals and one delivery or in three days a meal and another delivery to save on some cost of employee transportation, some things like that. So we'll be looking at those options as we find more information out. We still continue to collaborate with others across multiple platforms in the Southwest Service Club, the Big South Conference and across the state for that. I wish I had a little, I thought I have a little more information. But we do not have a lot of definitive answers other than sorry, last Friday.
Wayne?
Yes, Joe.
Question. We are planning on some kind of a graduation, some kind of a fashion, compassion, some kind of a graduation with, um, in the community.
We are going to have a graduation of what type it is and what it is. We do not have a commitment on that yet. But we will have a graduation for kids.
Okay.
We're just not sure how we're going to pull it off and if the guidelines are being given to us, we'll pull it off. Their schools are looking graduations as late as July 19th or 20th or the end of June also.
Now, is there a meeting tomorrow about the, with kids, with students?
I believe Mr. Joyce is hosting a first round meeting to talk to them about graduation possibilities. Ours is all preliminary planning until we get definitive answers from the state. And unfortunately, sometimes they've been a little slow on that. We're probably a week ahead of it.
I think you're going to have some good suggestions tomorrow that'll be brought up, I think, from students.
We think we're going to have some great suggestions coming from the students. My concern is, is not what we do, it's when we're able to do it and how we're able to. Is the guy I have sitting there. I think the drive-through prom idea is a great idea just whether we can do it then or later or at all. So.
Drive-through prom? Oh gee, the graduation. Oh.
We don't have it, Joe. Before people go out there, we don't have definitive answers until we get more information from the state, but we're going to be working on possible solutions. Definitely.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Because it's going to be something that's going to really be a positive or negative as far as the community is concerned. Because the community wants graduation and they want it as personal as possible.
We want graduation also. That's for sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Questions? I wish I had more.
Just a couple of comments. I was at MSBA meeting the other day with Governor Walz and he's going through all this information. And so every district is going to have to kind of develop a plan of their own. And then it's going to have to fit the schedule that the state is setting because they're not going to want everybody social distancing to close and things like that. And he's going to keep up with that. And we'll have another meeting. Actually, we have a meeting this Thursday with MSBA to talk about new details and new plans and ideas. And they're getting ideas and questions from every school district in the state. And it doesn't seem to matter what size district you are. They're just going to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe.
The comment that I have is that we aren't supposed to live in a bubble. We have to take a few risks. And that pertains to graduation too.
Other comments or anything?
Yes, I have a comment regarding how the distance learning has been going. And I've had the opportunity to hear back from students and teachers and community members. And it's been a very positive experience for the most part to hear back. Reports are that this district, due to its use with iPads and some technology that have been implemented through the years, have put this district a few good steps ahead of the rest. Some districts do not have this technology and they were left scrambling with trying to transport educational materials to student homes, et cetera. And so I want to give a hands down or hands shout out to the administration and the teachers for doing a fine job of this and hearing positive feedback from students in the community.
And to back that, we actually on round two, the principals conducting one survey after the first two weeks. And that Friday, they put out another survey and they're trying to even fine tune and make it even better. So I give them credit for taking feedback and be willing to change and share that with their staff. So these two planning days coming up on Friday and Monday where there is no student zoning connection, where our teachers are focused on how to close out the rest of the year and finish the rest of planning through the year with this. The principals, we have them in the morning digitally with their tools to share and improve on what we're currently doing and make it even better. So I give a lot of credit to all those involved, including our senators, our secretaries. Also, we're making sure coordination is taking place. And I'm, I'm very happy that we're in the position we are with technology because I think we'd be overwhelmed right now.
Other comments, questions?
Oh, I forgot one thing. If it wasn't for you guys looking at us on those items, we wouldn't be having them either. So hats off to you guys for helping us implement future items too. So we'd be in trouble without that support.
Okay. I think remind you to keep track of the emails and stuff that come from MSBA and also from MRA. Once changes come or developed, they're real quick about getting these out so that we can read them and know what's happening all around the state, all around the country. And you'll find out Minnesota is on top of stuff all the time. Okay, item number 20. Transfer of funds per executive order 20-19 is on your screen right now.
When the board packet went out last week, they didn't have this updated guidance on here. So this is the newest updated guidance from MDE regarding this fund transfer. Wayne, if you want to go down to the, what it says is that in under 21 there, oh, you went by it, Wayne, back up again. Going up, right there, A, B. Oh, you don't have the right one up there, Wayne. What it, what this says that there's only a certain reasons why we can do a fund transfer. One of them is to provide eligible children care. One is to pay additional transportation costs. Another is to pay for additional costs related to technology needed during our distance learning. Another one is to pay for a portion of staff and salary benefits employees paid through the community service fund. And the other one is to pay for a portion of food service staff fund for salary benefits because of the distance learning. There you go. So it's A, B, C, E, E, right there. Those are the reasons why we can use this. And the third thing or the final thing is F is that we cannot do this if it is, if it is, we can't increase our state aid obligations or any of our tax authority. So those are the parameters that we have to work within as of now. It could change once again, but this is what we have right now. And so Wayne, if you want to go to page four of this document. This is when you sort of think back to where we just looked at the preliminary budget. This is where it says what we can and cannot do. Okay? So it's the way over there in the right-hand column is, it was, it'll say either no or yes if we can use these funds to do this fund transfer. Obviously, there's some no's there, but there's also some yeses. And so as we start finding some numbers, we're going to start then looking at this and saying, hey, you know, do we need to recoup some of these costs? How can we do it? And can we transfer funds? So this is our general ed funds on here on page one. That goes into page two. So this is what we'll be looking at as we start finalizing some of the figures for this year. And if we want to do it, and if we do, how much? The one area that Wayne and I have already talked about for sure is maybe using some of our ECFE funding. That will be on page seven is our community ed funding. But this is just an information that we'll be looking at and be talking about in the future.
The concern is there are even bringing revenues in the community ed side and their expenses going out. May require us to do a transfer in that area. We will definitely have to do some type of, if we have to run a emergency daycare through community ed and can grab zero revenue in June, for sure. That's up to the government for those.
That's page eight, Wayne, is the community ed fund four.
There we go.
There you go. We just wanted to introduce you to this information. So you're not surprised if we start talking about it.
And we don't have to settle up until our audit. So that could be next September, October.
And we are tracking all of our expenses as best as we can with related to COVID-19 and some of that things. So, um, you know, we should be able to put a financial amount on, on those. So.
Any questions on that? Anything else? Anybody else for meeting today?
Joe, you mentioned something?
What's that?
You said something earlier.
Is it possible to say something at a regular meeting or is this one okay? To say something here about the new building? Do you know, I'm entering, I have a question and a comment. Is it okay? Or do I have to wait for this regular meeting? Can you hear me?
I guess you would know if it's going to cause any issues. I have no idea what the question would be at all. So.
Well, it's, it won't cause an issue. Just a comment as far as, um, maybe something that we could do to, a positive thing for the community.
It's time since that we should know about it because we have a POC meeting coming up. We have issues with items.
What do you mean?
Fire away, Joe. That's fine.
Let's wait, Joe, I think, then talk about it.
Oh.
Then we can put it on agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Anything else? If not, everybody be safe. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your time. And discussion.